Open meeting, posted right around the corner as you walk in the door is the actual open meeting act. If you would, I'd ask you to please stand with us for a moment of silence and as well, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call.
Brinkwist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Mooney.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
File.
Here.
Okay, I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda as was provided you.
So move, Your Honor, second.
Motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, if you would please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well approval of the full agenda as in your packet.
So move, Your Honor, second.
Motion with a second to approve the full agenda, again, your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, under action items, public hearing tonight to receive the report on the findings and the suggestions from the economic development citizen advisory review committee as required by state statutes, section eighteen dash twenty-seven fifteen. Randy?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a requirement of state statutes. If you have an LB eight forty economic development program, statutes require if you have a citizens' advisory review committee. Our folks, citizens serving on the CARC are Bill Cannon, Cindy Morrow, Jim Angles, Aaron Knott, and Jan Einspar. I serve as an ex officio, non-voting member of the CARC. Statutes require that the CARC meet every six months, and they are required to report to the city council on their findings and any suggestions for improvement they would have, and that has to be done at a public hearing, which is the purpose of the public hearing tonight. The CARC met on December third, and the CARC's report is included in the agenda packets. As you'll see when you look at the report, the CARC reviewed the economic development fund financial statements for the period from May 2015 through October 2015. October thirty-one, the economic development fund had four million dollars of cash, weighing the three-point-six-million-dollar payment to Black Hills Energy under the terms of Northeast Nebraska Line Funding Assistance Agreement, and this for construction of a natural gas pipeline to Norfolk. The only expenditure during the period was debt service payments on the bonds that we issued to provide that funding. The CARC considered whether or not the city admitted its requirement to have fifty percent of revenues, LB eight forty revenues, expended or committed after five full budget years. It's the requirement of statutes, and that would be October one, 2015 for us, since October one, 2015 was in the six-month reporting period that they're looking at. They looked at that, and Black Hills Board of Directors recently confirmed its approval of this Northeast Nebraska line project, and that agreement was in effect on October one, 2015, and remains in effect. The agreement, however, contemplated that Tejas Tubiar, or one of its subsidiaries, would be the applicant for the funding. We know now that that's not going to be the case, so there will need to be some modifications to that agreement, and we'll be working with Black Hills on those modifications over the next month or so. The CARC suggested that the city get a letter from Black Hills saying that we're still committed to moving forward with this project. We did that, and that's included in the agenda packet. Matter of fact, I looked out on Black Hills Energy's website today, and on the homepage, the very first news item under there is they're saying that they're committed and going forward with that Northeast Nebraska line. So the CARC reviewed all that information and found that the city's economic development program was operating in compliance with the statutes, in compliance with our budget, and that was their finding. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks. Randy, any questions for you, Madal? Okay. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on then. We're looking for consideration of resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-four related to the conditional use permit for Telebeep to have a communications tower at twenty-two-oh-eight Elmer's Lane. If you remember right, resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-four was tabled at the November second, twenty fifteen city council meeting, so if I could, I would ask you for a motion to take from the table the, and continue conversation.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to take from the table and give consideration to resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-four. I'd ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, with that then, to go back to consideration of, okay. I do need a motion then for consideration now, once again, for discussion of resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-four relating to the conditional use permit.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Maybe I need to go back to what actually was, does anybody have that right in front of them right away?
It's page ninety-two, version, version A of the resolution is on page ninety-two of the packet. That's the one that reverses it. Version B, which affirms it, is on page ninety-four of your packet, and version C, which modifies it, is on page ninety-six of your packet.
Okay, Val, do you want to speak to this first? Anything that, I, I think really what needs to happen here is certainly, if I remember right, this body chose to ask staff to go do some homework for us on this, pull together information so that we could go forward and maybe have a better feel for certainly how other communities may at this time be handling some of these situations. I don't really know that we want to, and just my opinion, I'm open for suggestions from this elected body. I don't know that we really need to get into certainly listening to the information that was provided us at the last meeting at the hearing, but I do think maybe it's important that we listen to maybe some of the highlights, Val, that you believe is the planner, you were able to discover. So unless somebody has different ideas for me. Jane, do you want to add something to this?
Just briefly, Your Honor, we, staff did follow through with requests that was made by Councilman Langy and furnished by the council that night, went and did our research with our sister cities of first class, or a number of them anyway, and the synopsis of that research is in your packets and is available, and Val would be happy to answer any questions or give you a brief synopsis of that if that's what you wish. From my point of view, I'm not, when you look at the data that was collected, it really probably has very little, if anything, to do with the decision-making in front of you tonight as far as this particular conditional use permit. It may be helpful as a way forward for our community if we're looking to change anything within our conditional use permit, excuse me, process as it comes to communications towers, it may or may not be helpful. The information is out there, and we do have a subcommittee being established right now with interested parties to be included, including Mr. Shomer and others that are in the telecommunications businesses here locally to, to discuss the, the way we handle communications towers going forward.
Val, anything you want to add to that?
May I ask, would you like a little synopsis of the first-class cities of what I found, or just?
Certainly.
Okay. We started off asking these planning staff of the first-class cities if they had ever had a situation like this, exactly like this come up, that they were using a utility pole as a communication tower, and none of them said yes to that, but when I explained the situation that it was a commu, a utility pole used as a communication tower, and that's all that it was being used for, they said that they would consider that to be a communication tower and therefore subject to those codes in their zoning code. And then also, we went into their specific code as to versus ours, and many of them required further information given to planning and zoning staff before they were allowed to put up a new communication tower, like why they could not co-locate with someone in that vicinity, where the other towers were located, the distance between the towers, and such things like that, that we don't necessarily have as part of our code right now. Any questions?
Any questions, Val?
I guess one of the, you know, one of the large items of concern last time was discussion as whether it's a tower or a pole, but from what are others, what you said, the sister cities and that are actually defining, even though it's a pole, it's, it's a tower, so.
When I explained this specific instance to them, they said, yes, we would consider that a communication tower because that is what the pole is being used for, is for antennas for communication.
Any other questions?
This, this is basically just a general overview from those first-class cities, or is it each individual city said the same thing, or, I mean, were you getting different reports, or were we, I mean, because I had, I had been in Fremont recently, kind of asked them what they did, and they didn't really have anything, because they haven't been, they haven't really been in the situation to be asked that, but, so I'm just, you know.
Like, we have a report from Fremont as well, and a briefing from Fremont as well.
Right.
At the end of the day, when I read her synopsis and the research there, it did look like all these types of situations were created to treat these as communication towers, whether it be a lattice tower, a monopole, these in particular, this, this instance would be created, would be treated as a monopole, whether it's wooden or it's made out of steel, the definitions of those would be towards the monopole, the way it appeared to me. Do you agree with that, Val?
Yes.
I understand what you're saying, but I was under the impression that they haven't had a situation where they're, you know, it's, they're kind of in the same situation we are in now, and they're, they're, they're going to have to move forward and address the situation like we will be shortly with our new subcommittee meeting, you know, coming up, how to move things forward in the future.
Fremont in particular?
No, I just, that's the kind of the feeling I got when I spoke with them. I mean, I think they had their, you know, I don't know if anybody's gone through and made the, changed their code requirements for communication towers as we move forward with this issue.
I don't think they differentiated, again, between whether it was wooden or steel or a mono, whether it was, it was a monopole communications tower, I, if I understand what you're going after, Councilman.
Well, I think everybody's kind of stuck in the situation we are in now. They don't really have anything moving forward on their books, like to address this new issue, this is a new issue for most communities.
I, well, I don't know if I would, I don't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily agree with that as far as communication towers being, or been around communities forever and ever. The definitions might be slightly different, how they apply the code might be slightly different. Their codes might be slightly different than Norfolk's. At the end of the day, it appeared that ours, ours is the least restrictive code, or one of the least restrictive codes in the, in the communities that Val looked at. I don't know what that means, is that a good thing for our community or a bad thing? You know, we often get accused of being over-restrictive here in Norfolk, and I imagine all cities would tell that story at some instances in their code enforcement histories, but in this particular case, anyway, it would appear by the research that Val done that we're one of the least restrictive as it comes to towers. And then, anecdotally, I'll tell you that we're looking hard, as you, as the council knows, we're looking hard at the site and the new, new communications tower for our public safety infrastructure near the water tower or adjacent to the water tower. When we've reached out to tower builders, one gentleman in particular just did a cursory review of, drove around, kind of windshield review of, of our community, and his statement to us, staff members that day when he did his presentation was, well, I can tell you you guys are pretty, not very restrictive in your, in your, in how you place towers because you sure have a lot of them. You know, and that was just his, whether that means anything or not, but this is a tower builder guy that's coming from outside of our community that builds towers all over the world, and that was his observation in a fifteen-minute windshield drive around our community. So what that told me as, as a city administrator was, we're probably, we are probably less restrictive than most. I don't know if that, what I don't know, is that a good thing or a bad thing, is we move forward, as we start to see, again, the progression of, of technology in our community moving forward, what does that mean for tower placement? Do we have a plethora of tower requests coming forward, and what does that mean to our residential areas, and how are we going to regulate that going forward? It's really the nuts and bolts of the matter as we meet in subcommittee and meet with our, our technology providers in the community and try to find our way forward. Do we want to have that more restrictive to have some protections for our neighborhoods, or less restrictive? Because the technology is out there, it changes pretty rapidly. There's other opportunities, we've done some, a little bit of, of research in small cell technologies that are out there. I don't know if it's necessarily germane to the, the technology that Telebeep or a connecting point would use, and Tom could probably speak directly to that, but when we, our research would indicate small cell technology being something that is trying to push the data into more populated areas in communities. Omaha, Lincoln, the larger cities in particular across the United States are seeing this from their large, the large cellular cust, carriers out there, where they're doing small poles that sometimes are in the light poles, or some are connected to a light pole, or a replacement light pole that have this technology, or the guts of these systems in there, and they're trying to push that data wires, wireless lead through their cellular service into the larger, the larger populous bases because everybody wants data in their phones. Again, the gentleman that was doing our tower told us flat out, said, both of them actually, we had two of them in town, they both said, that's coming to Norfolk, it's coming everywhere. The small cell technology, the small cell world is coming to your community soon because people demand to have that kind of service. So, you know, it is a pretty rapidly changing world out there. I suspect we have to do some code work to keep up with it so we understand what it means to our neighborhoods across the whole community, because it will mean something. You know, the more, the more towers, or the more poles, or however you want to describe it, that we have in our community, the more sense of urgency there will be for our residential neighbors and our commercial property owners and on both sides of that equation. The, the look of your community versus the data and the serviceability of your community. If those two are in a rub, which tonight they seem to be in a rub a bit, we have to have a place where we can land as a community, and I think that'll come out in, in our discussions as we move forward.
Val, can I ask you, you know, I did read through, there was a lot of information that was provided us from the different communities, and I remember reading more than one location that talked about the fact that if, if in fact there was a tower placed in a residential area, the clearance from that base of to the next residential was a hundred percent?
Many times a hundred percent, a couple of them even said in residential areas, two-hundred feet or a hundred percent, whichever's greater. And we actually have in our code, too, that the setback is a hundred percent of the height of the tower, but it can be reduced with a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Columbus's mayor example here is two-hundred meter, three-hundred percent the height of the tower, whichever is greater in a residential, in a single-family or duplex residential district in Columbus, for example.
I bring that up because I think it goes back to, if I understand correctly, we were certainly, Telebeep was in compliance when it was at the original height that was there. True statement, under the CUP.
The third. Feet height, I mean?
Yes.
The original one's two thousand and four, Your Honor?
Yeah, two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four. The pole that was there was a thirty-five-foot pole.
Okay.
However, it had a mast placed on it that was twenty-foot, if you remember the testimony that twenty-foot or so, I don't remember off the top of my head, but above that pole. So as we got those requests in back, back in that time period in our history, and Scott can speak directly to that because he was managing that shop back then, as those requests would come in, our general rule was in residential, if it's thirty-five feet or less, there's no permit.
Okay. No permit.
Right.
Okay.
Thirty-five foot was the height requ, that was the height.
Okay.
The height restriction.
Counsel, any further discussion? I don't know, it seems to me that there's a lot of questions still being looked at here, but it still goes back to, it does not meet what was certainly understood to be legit when the addition to those poles were added to. I'm a simple, simple speaking person, so go forward.
The pole that's in there now, overall height is, including the mast and everything that's on top of it, is, this is a question, is how much?
That was a question.
It's seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five feet.
Including the antenna, the engineering department afterwards, it's seventy feet to the top of the pole and then another five feet to the top of the antenna, so a total of seventy-five feet.
So the, so the seventy feet clearly is past the height limitation of the zoning jurisdiction, and that is able to be varied by conditional use permit or not?
Yes.
To the seventy-foot or not?
Yeah, we don't put any limits to the height in the conditional use, so if they're okay with the seventy or seventy-five feet, because the conditional use permit currently says a maximum height of seventy-five feet. That was approved.
And engineering verified that we are at the seventy-five feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments, considerations, questions?
So, we have code now regulating utility pools. Is there anything that addresses communications tower, towers in code right now?
Yes, we have a communication tower section in code that spells out.
And what is our height requirement for communication towers?
In code, there is no maximum height for the communication tower, it just depends on your zoning height, which they're in residential, which is where you get the thirty-five feet maximum height.
Because of residential?
Because it's in residential.
Okay.
Yes.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but this conditional use permit that's before you is a communications tower?
Yeah.
Okay. It has, it has a component of a, of a wooden pole involved with it, but it is a communications tower.
And, and the current conditional use permit that's out there allows for the seventy-five foot on the communications tower?
The one that was passed by planning?
Passed by planning commission, okay.
There was, just to be clear, there was no conditional use permit prior to this last one that was passed by the planning commission.
Correct.
Wait, right.
Right, as all.
Okay. Well, are we ready to move forward?
What?
All right, then I will ask that, unless somebody has a difference, unless somebody wants another question or has any further, I would ask for your vote.
We're voting.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, please go back over Clint for us, the one, two, and three. I'm sorry.
What needs to, what needs to happen for you to dispose of the appeal that's before you is that you need to move, someone needs to move, and, and you need to take an action on either version A, B, or C of resolution twenty fifteen thirty-four. Again, version A reverses the decision made by the planning commission, that's on page ninety-two of your agenda packet. Version B affirms the action of the conditional, of, as far as the conditional use permit as passed by the planning commission, that's on page ninety-four, and version C would be modified where, that's on page ninety-six, where you would take and, and work with any of the conditions that were included with the, from the planning commission that you want to, that you, that you might want to alter in any way.
So Clint, how, in essence, is B different than C?
Well, B, if, great question, B simply, if, if B were to be moved, seconded, and approved by the council, then just exactly the way that the resolution came from the planning commission, you would, you would just take it just exactly the way it is. For example, you were talking about the height of the, the height of the, of the conditional use permit, and right now, the way it came from the planning commission allows for seventy-five feet, right, Val? So let's say that you said, oh, we don't want it to be seventy-five feet, we want it to be seventy-six feet, or you want it to be seventy-four feet. You could change that if you wanted to, or any of the other conditions that were in there, or you could add additional conditions or delete conditions, or any way you want to modify it, version C is the way, is the mechanism by which you would do that.
But as those conditions are laid out in version C, they are, right now, the same as what?
Yeah, we just put them, we just put them in there for you to see, and then you'd have to make a motion to deal with whatever condition was of concern to you there, Counsel.
Is somebody ready to make a motion here?
Well, we have a motion with a second right now to bring it into discussion, right?
Right, but we don't have a motion.
Right, what?
We need to add one of the persons, right?
Right. Okay, or, okay. All right, so, go ahead, Josh, sorry.
Yeah, there's a lot to be addressed here, obviously, going into the future, and, you know, we have this decision in front of us right now, which is related to, but a little bit different than what we're going to be experiencing as further request in the future. And so regardless of what we do here, I think we need to move quickly at the subcommittee level about future policy related to these structures, because we're, I think, pretty unclear as to the direction we want to give to the community in saying, within residential areas, we need, we need certain levels of regulation or not. So I guess that's, that's just a comment that I would like to see regardless of what we do here tonight, that the subcommittee process that we mentioned before be taken up pretty quickly and a policy moving forward be adopted.
We're working on that right now, Councilman, as far as getting organized in the meeting, the contacts have probably already been made, so.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would argue that with you, Josh, so.
Well, I guess, when I, when I sit here and look at this, and so I'm saying, okay, would we or wouldn't we not have allowed this as a conditional use permit as it was presented to us? I suspect we probably would have, to some extent, that way, but since we're in this modification mode and that right now, or this developing mode of how we want to really address towers, I would like to move that we consider version C, and then if, to do that, and I guess I would make that motion, but I would need to know changes to it, Mr. Shukai, or not?
I think you could go through those, I, I think it's fine for you to articulate what the changes are that you want to, that you would like to see made.
Do I do that at the motion time, or would we bring that in for, I guess it'd almost have to be at the motion time because otherwise you don't.
I think it would be appropriate for you to make that part of your motion.
Okay, because what I would, what I would anticipate as, as a change on it is that item number one in particular, this permit should be for a ten-year period from October sixth, twenty fifteen through October sixth, twenty twenty-five. I would take that down to a two-year period to allow us to, to develop where we're at as far as what we want to see on this, and I guess I, one question before I continue with that then, so if, this is And I guess I, one question before I continue with that then, so if this is approved, then it would have to come back, and if in two years it was contrary to what we saw as being, how we want to proceed forward as a community, if the pole was in violation, then at that point in time, it would have to come down, or could have to come down?
As I would see it, if you were to move, if that were to be approved, so that instead of the ten years, it would be two years from October 6, 2015, so what that would mean, if that were to be approved by the council, is the conditional use has run its course on October 6 of 2017, and it would need to be removed at that time, and then as...
Excuse me for interrupting, either removed or re-applied for?
Yeah, there would be nothing that would preclude, that would be the termination time, so, you know, in advance of that, if there were any changes made to the existing rules or not, there could be another application made to, for the placement to go on beyond that 2017 date.
Well, that, I guess that would be one condition that I would like to have altered in there underneath my motion. No, I guess that is my motion, then. I guess I'm waiting to see if there's a second.
Second.
Jim, I don't disagree with you, I just question the two years might be a little short. Would you want to extend that, or do you think that's, I mean?
You know, I guess I don't think that it's really all that short for two reasons. One, we're saying that it's changing that fast, and two, I think a lot of things happened on this that either were questions that were intentionally not asked, or questions that were overlooked, and, you know, the expense is already there.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, because a lot of expense already for maybe just a two-year period, and so, that's the only question, yeah. And I don't disagree with what you're saying, a lot of things were maybe overlooked. We've got to have subcommittee meetings to get this sorted out, might give us a little more time, and then give him time to figure out what he's going to do if, after six months, we come up with a solution and it's not going to be good for him, he can, you know, have some time to figure things out. That's all I'm asking, I'm not disagreeing with anything you said, though.
I guess I don't have the problem with that, because, I mean, it's an expense that he opted to take on out before time anyway, before he even had the fifteen-year, you know, he just did it, so, and then it's more of a, well, okay, now how are you going to react to it, that I've got this expense out there, and that, we've got a two-year grace period in here anyway, that the neighbors, well, it's not really a two-year anymore, because we're already in, we're two months into it already, so I don't have a problem with it, so I would hold fast with the two-year time period on my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, any other discussion on that?
Well, I'd only bring to the fact that as we move forward, going into subcommittee, I'd like to know what the makeup of that subcommittee is going to be. Off the top of my head, I think it's Public Safety and Planning and Community Development, which gets the four councilmen and the mayor, and then we included Mr. Shomar and Dan Spray in that as well, from the industry side of things, and then various city staff so far, but it could be as robust as you want it, elected officials, you know, perhaps we should have some involvement from neighborhoods or residents, I don't know how to go about picking that, but, you know, you're really talking about, in part, anyway, quality of life issues, you know? What was before you hear is accusation that this is unsightly. So, whatever you do to modify your code to address this going forward, do you consider the unsightliness of that, you know, and that's, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. So, to put code language together that takes care of that is hard to do, you know? I'm not sure exactly how you'd go about doing that without just having an elected official in their capacity of representing the community at large, kind of filter that through your own interactions with your citizens. But it's really, that's a big part of it, and that's what other communities are experiencing as well, I think, is, you know, if you had a number of communications towers, and the larger the number that goes in your community, the more unattractiveness probably is gathered, you know? If these started to sprout everywhere in your community, would that be a good thing or a bad thing? And how would we want to address that? Because I think the pushback from residents in North Forkin, or any community, would grow considerably if these started to become very popular solutions, because there could be many opportunities to cite these type of poles in your communities, because there's many vendors. So, as the technology changes, or the opportunities changes, or the penetration of the data changes in your community, and they want to penetrate that data and carry large amounts of data to get to our cell phones that everybody has in their pockets, what does that mean to our future? I mean, does that mean we have pole after pole after pole after pole in May? And what does that pole look like, and what does that mean? You know, that's the, again, back to the small cell technology type of conversations that I am very, very little about, other than my general read of it. So, I think that's going to be hard for the subcommittee. So, I would guess, I would recommend that you have more of a robust committee than a smaller one, perhaps, to have some of those quality of life issues addressed as well.
That was my, that's what kind of my thoughts were also, I think we need to make sure we include a number of different resources in making these decisions, because if we put ourselves in a box, I guess, times are changing too fast for that. You know, right now, there's communities in town right now that run fiber every home in Nebraska. I mean, there's things that are changing, towers, people are demanding faster resources. Some of this, I think, is a demographic problem. You know, if you look at it that way, certain age groups probably think of this as crazy, and certain age groups think you're crazy for thinking this, and I'm probably...
Looking at me, Shane.
I'm looking past you.
Okay, okay.
That's kind of shining like mine tonight. But anyway, you got to, you got to kind of look, I mean, you know, they're talking one gig, people are using this as a resource to stream live constantly, we've all sitting up here, we probably all got cell phones on us right now, you know, we're all wired, I mean, it's just a thing we've got to look at, moving forward, we can't, unfortunately, you just can't be open-minded to the change that's probably coming. And what that means, I don't know, but we do need people in that industry, and I'm glad that you're asking people in the industry to be part of that, but we also need people within the community to be part of that decision-making, because obviously, industry's going to want one thing in the, you know, your neighborhood, or your, I mean, you've got home builders associations, you know, you've got chamber of commerce people, I mean, there are different groups I think we could probably talk to that would be, it'd be smart to have there. You know, developers, different developers in town here.
I agree, I'd be open to any suggestions that the council has as far as an inclusion of folks, because, again, the beauty's in the eye of the beholder, and the more you have of certain things, the more people take notice, and they want to know if that's good or bad for your community. That's why, when Scott's Bluff, for example, is partnering with, I don't know the name of the company, and it doesn't really matter, but a company that has done some of these small cell technologies in Omaha, and they're looking at the light pole option, where they actually take a light pole, an existing light pole out, that's been in your neighborhood for decades, and they replace it with a like one that has the guts and abilities to transmit that, you know, in a small geographical area, and then they do a series of those to communicate, especially in the large populated areas of your community, or the downtowns of your community. That's happening in Omaha and Lincoln right now, and Scott's Bluff, again, is looking at doing a case study of sorts out there in a community that's much like ours as far as population goes. So, I agree, I think we should have a cross-section of the community.
I think we should also have NPPD involved in some of this conversation, so in case there's some things that come up with them, that they might see a problem down the road with their stuff, be also involved in this, too. And we're going to end up, I think, coming back to the conditional use permit part, we're going to come back to that through the planning commission over and over again, for maybe ever, because you might want to put one of them towers, and it might be in a hole, they need to go another ten feet higher. That's what we have the special conditional use permits out there for. So, and we may end up revisiting this back again, the different location, because it's in a hole, the tower needs, the pole or tower, or whatever you call it, needs to be higher, and that'll come back through the planning commission again, and we'll have to revisit this all over again.
And I guess that's a very strong statement there, exactly what you're saying, Pat. And what's that, you know, are we going to, I don't want us to get too quick on trying to reach resolution on what it is that our code should read. I think we kind of need to step back and take our time, and, I mean, I'm all about gathering folks together and realizing what direction we're going with this kind of technology. I understand that, and those people out there that do want this technology, but it comes back to, you know, like I say, I remember the discussion that we had, Shane, when we were building the chamber building, and they wanting to rid of some of those poles for the beauty of the area. And that's, I think that we're going to get a little pushback when we start looking at residential areas for poles, especially when you're looking at maybe the height. So, I like the suggestion of, and I think we look to the league to work with us a little bit, maybe, too, on trying to come up with, because, as you say, probably every community is struggling with some of these, you know, technology is moving faster than maybe we are, as far as knowledge, and again, you know, I appreciate what it is that needs to happen within communities, but I want us to be smart, so that we're not making precedence here of seventy-five foot poles in somebody's backyard that is next to mine, or yours, or whose ever, so.
I believe that will be the task of the subcommittee going forward, is to, and it's beyond discussion tonight, who would be involved in all of that, but I think we certainly have to look at that. I'd also agree with Councilman Langy's idea that two years is enough to get that done, we're working on subcommittee right now, and so it will be a task that those folks will have to deal with.
Okay, so, you have a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor was to revise the conditional use permit with the revision from ten years to two years on that October 2015, I believe it is. I don't have it in front of me, trying to do it all from...
Yep, you're doing fine, it's October 6.
...to 2017, and leaving the other items intact that way, and I think, I thought I heard a second or not.
There was.
There was, okay. With that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2015-34, version C, with the modification of the period to be two-year term, is adopted.
Okay, thanks very much, lots of discussion there. We're going to move on then to item eighteen, which is consideration of approval of change order number one with Alcorn paving construction for concrete improvements, 2015-1 project, that is resulting in a net increase from forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and nineteen cents. Do I have a motion for that consideration?
One more than a motion, Your Honor.
All right. We have a motion with a second, and standing in front of us, Mark.
Good evening. Just to recap, this contract is basically three projects all wrapped into one. As always, these types of projects are unit price contracts, meaning is we pay for what we get, whether it's more or less, so. The three locations, two of them were Krenzine, which is the frontage road on 275 on the southwest side, there by Tractor Supply and ShopCo, so one location was there by Tractor Supply, the other was by ShopCo. And then the third location as part of our 2015-1 improvements was Pazwalk Avenue from First Street going east, there on the north side of Memorial Field and Aqua Venture. So, those are the three projects all wrapped in this contract. You'll see that the majority of the change order came on Pazwalk Avenue. That project involves some concrete move and replacement with some, running some storm sewer to help with the drainage problem there, because those streets over there were really flat and had some issues with some ponding water. In running that storm sewer, we came into some conflicts with some underground utilities, which got us into some changes on the storm sewer that we had to make. It also increased some of the area that we had to sod there, because we had to tear up a lot more of the green space to do that. Another reason why we had a large increase in sod quantity is because on the north side, there's a fairly steep slope there, instead of just putting it back at a four to one slope that we usually try to put our minimum, we realized it's going to look a lot better if we just grade it all the way back to the sidewalks, we had quite a bit of increase in sod quantity there. So, that, the storm sewer and the extra sod quantity was a large increase on Krenzine, or on Pazwalk. On Krenzine, we did a little bit more concrete work than originally anticipated, both on some driveways going back and on the street surface there, so those are the majority of the changes, everything else is kind of related to just balancing to, from bid quantities to actual quantities, so with that, I'd take any questions.
So, we're the one making the changes to add the increase on there? That mean why it wasn't in the bid?
Yes, yeah, some of those increases are either due to, one was due to, because it may be a panel, the concrete wasn't bad, and we originally did our quantities in the previous year when we did the survey, and then it got bad over the winter, so we decided to expand the project. Like on Krenzine, one was on the north end, we had a low ponding spot that ponded some water, so we decided to do about four or five panels of concrete to help with that ponding that we didn't originally plan to do, stuff like that. So, they're all, like I said, it's unit price, so, you know, we paid for so much per square yard of concrete, so if it's more or less, we just contract price to match.
You think it was a good bid, where we couldn't bid it and get a cheaper price?
Yes, yes, I believe so. And we did bid the original contract, and the original contract, we did have another bidder on that, and so, you know, we do feel like we'll get a fair price.
I think the other thing that's important for this board to know, too, is if we look back on the other bid, and page back through it, the unit prices were higher, so if we had gone with that other contractor, I mean, we would have, we'd still be seeing the same units going in there at a much higher price, so, I mean, this is atypical for, you know, you don't like to see changes, but from the time when the survey was done to the time when the work is done, generated this, and unless we want to get into a very negative situation and a very expensive upfront portion, I think theirs is, you know, very adequate, very appropriate, and it's putting everybody on an even playing field that way, so.
It's kind of like remodeling your home, you just never know until you get started, do you?
That's what I don't do.
Again, any other questions or comments at all? Okay, Mark, thanks very much. All right. If no further discussion, I'm going to ask that you vote, please.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, and the final thing is public comment period, so is there anyone in the audience tonight that wants to come forward and speak to this council? Certainly, there is no action that can be taken, but we'd be glad to hear from any or none. So, with that being said, we are adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone. Stay safe. Safe travels, anybody that's going and...